It was published in the May 24, 2007 edition of the Middleborough Gazette and was posted by Constable Patrick Kearney on May 25, 2007. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. For this meeting, I have appointed the following people as tellers. On the left, Marilyn Hunt -- my left. In the middle, Bob Marshall, and on the right, Leanna Cataldo. They have been sworn into office by the Clerk Janet Tracy. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the Town's General Bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meeting. While the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume "Town Meeting Time" as the standard for conduct at Lakeville Town Meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that there are two microphones that have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by me, the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you wish to give your address, feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone may speak. Generally, that has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep this meeting moving if I find that the speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised or the same points are being raised over and over again. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. In the case of zoning articles, I will seek the report of the Planning Board and receive its report of its public hearing. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up your green colored voting card issued to each registered voter.
Orange.
No.
That says green.
There are two different colors. This is for the annual. This is for the special. Mr. Moderator?
The oranges.
Excuse me, Clerk.
This is for people who can only vote in the special.
That's right. That's right. Orange is for both people.
I think that's specific.
Green is specific.
Or vice versa.
According to the clerk, she has issued one of these that can be used for everyone who had registered for both of the meetings. This was used for those people who had registered too late to vote in the annual but may vote in the special. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's different. I'd like to remind you that no food or drink are permitted in the auditorium except water. And before we begin the special town meeting, I would like to call to your attention those residents of Lakeville who are active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Sandra Horton, who between 1990 and 2005 served as Town Clerk, Board of Registars, Personal Advisory Board, Burial Agent, Search Committee, Town Administrator Search Committee, Public Safety Town Office Building Feasibility Study and Wage and Personnel Board. Also passed away, Mary Fuller. She was a staunch member of the Historical Commission and was on the Master Plan Subcommittee. Michael Standish, Reserve Patrolman, 1981 and '85 through '88. Abe Van Lenton, who served between 1963 and 1986 on the Board of Fire Engineers, a representative of the town to the New England Insurance Rating Association, the Economic Development Area Commission, the Planning Board, the Development Industrial Commission, the Industrial Development Finance Authority, and from 1973 to 1986 was a member of the Board of Assessors. What I would like you to do is to stand for a moment in silence in their memory. Then, please remain standing as we salute the flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Finally, I would like to introduce those of us on the stage to my left. Janet Tracy, the Town Clerk, Rita Garbutt, the Town Administrator. Our Town Council is yet to arrive. Her name is Kathleen Connolly. Nancy Yates, Selectman, Charles Evers, Selectman, Derek Maxey, Selectman, Motha Weeks Green Finance Committee, Robert Hill Finance Committee, Harry Mansfield Finance Committee, James Hanlon Finance Committee, Richard Velez Finance Committee, and Cindy McCray, Town Accountant. At this time, does anyone require a copy of the warrants? If you do, please raise your hand and a counter will get one for you. I see no hands raised, so we will continue. I seek now a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I declare it passed by unanimous consent. We now may move to Article 1, but before I do, I just want to touch on one thing. We have several people who are going to speak, both at this meeting and in the annual meeting, who are not residents of the town but whose information we will need. For the special town meeting, we will need to hear from our Department of Public Works Superintendent Chris Beck, and we're going to need some information from Castle Booze relative to the police station and the feasibility study in general. His name is Joseph Maloney. Is there anyone who objects to either of these two people speaking when asked to do so? Seeing none, I will look upon this as unanimous vote of the town meeting that they be allowed to speak on their appointed times. Now, Article 1.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to transfer and/or appropriate from available funds certain sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2007 for various accounts in the general fund. All is set forth on the document entitled Article Number 1, Special Town Meeting Transfers, June 11, 2007.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you want to go through the reading of the?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
To transfer and appropriate from reserve fund $50,000, Article 2007 Vocational OOD Tuitions and Transportation, $27,254, Special Revenue Reserve for Appropriation, $15,000, Other General Government Prior Year Expense, $3,000, Hourly Treasurer/Collector Wages, $9,178, Town Office Expense, $15,000, Hourly Police Wages, $15,000, Hourly Fire Wages, $10,000, Visiting Nurse -- I'm not sure what that is -- Visiting Nurse Expense, $1,000, COA Expense, $5,000, Library Expense, $5,000, Elected Official Highway Surveyor, $29,400, and to transfer appropriate to -- appropriate to -- to Snow and Ice Wages and Expense, $23,519, Article 2007 Special Needs OOD Tuition and Transportation, $60,000, Legal Expense, $15,000, Unemployment Expense, $9,623, Police Expense, Cruiser, $10,000, Police Expense, $5,000, Veterans Benefits Expense, $12,000, Gas Inspector Fee Expense, $3,640, Plumbing Inspector Fee Expense, $5,000, Wire Inspector Fee Expense, $4,350, Street Lights Expense, $2,000, Cable Advisory Expense, $4,000, Appointed Official Superintendent of Streets, $17,400, Highway Expense, $10,000, Wages Building Department, $2,000, Other General Government Postage, $1,300, for a total of $184,832.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you wish to speak to it before I ask for the Finance Committee's report?
Yes, this is just housekeeping article to finish out the 2007 fiscal year.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Does anyone have a comment? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of Article 1, please raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. All opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised, so I declare that this Article 1 has passed unanimously. By the way, if I look and somebody has raised one card or something, please wave it so that I can, you know, make a correct count because sometimes people don't -- and it's hard up here looking out. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to create a special purpose stabilization fund for the payment of debt service and costs associated with capital projects, to be known as the Debt Service Capital Projects Stabilization Fund, and further to transfer $360,000 from Special Revenue Reserve for Appropriation Account to the stabilization fund created hereunder.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it?
Yes, these are one-time, nonrecurring revenue funds. As you probably all know, we have some capital projects that are coming, like the station at the train station apartments, and we are getting some money from them, incentive from the state of $350,000. And if you subtract the $15,000 for legal fees and then you add another $25,000, which is the mitigation that we got for the Walgreens, that comes to $360,000. And we need to put this money in a special stabilization fund because our debt for the OA budget is $260,000. That's what we owe from things that we've borrowed over the last few years. Okay? In '09, that goes up to $492,992. That's almost $493,000, which owes almost a half a million dollars. The difference is 232,762 that our debt service is going to increase. This is money that we owe. So that we are going to take this money that we're getting for one time, and we're going to use that over the next year to pay our debt service. Also, in 2010 and 2011, our debt service is going to be up over $400,000. So we need to put that money in a special account so that we can use it for our debt service in the future.
Thank you. Finance Committee have a report?
Finance Committee approves.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question to ask? I see no one coming forward to ask a question. This is going to require a two-thirds vote. I'm going to risk it and see if we can get it, but if it is not unanimous, I'm going to have to have a count. All in favor of Article 2, please raise your cards.
Article 1.
Thank you, you may put them down. Anyone opposed to Article 2, please raise your cards. There is a card raised, so therefore we will have a count. I will ask again, and this time counters, please count. All in favor of Article 2? Forty-nine. Fifty-one. Eighty-three. You may put your cards down. All opposed, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Zero.
One hundred and eighty-three to one, I declare it have passed by more than two-thirds. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to accept under provisions of General Laws, Chapter 90, Section 34, 2A, an appropriation of Chapter 122, Acts of 2006, in the amount of $103,397. At this time--
I need a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, speak to it.
At this time, I would like to introduce our new Superintendent of Streets, Mr. Christopher Pack, who will talk to this question.
This is the town's annual allotment from the state for roadway improvements.
Could you talk into the microphone, please?
This is the town's annual allotment from the state for roadway improvements, which the town needs to vote to accept.
Money coming in, all we have to say is yes. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Oh, yes, we approve.
Oh, yes, okay. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. It's a simple majority. All in favor of accepting the money, raise your cards. Thank you, may put them down. Is there anyone against this? I don't see it, it's unanimously passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote that the sum of $150,000 be and hereby is appropriated to pay costs of designing a new police station, including but not limited to the hiring of architects, engineers, a project manager, and other professionals for the preparation of designs, working drawings, bid documents, and related materials, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 21 of the General Bylaws -- excuse me, of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and to approve the proposed location of the new police station on town-owned property located at 28 Precinct Street, Site 4C, as further described on the attached plan, and that the selectmen are hereby authorized to petition to the General Court, if necessary, for special legislation authorizing the use of such property for the purpose of constructing a police station thereon.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, before we speak to this, I am exercising my prerogative as town moderator to divide this article into two parts. The first part will have to do with bonding and will end with the word "therefore," town "therefore." Then, we will discuss that, we will debate that, and we will vote on that. Then, we will go to the second portion, which is the citing of the police station and the petitioning to the General Court. In the first portion, it will require a two-thirds vote for bonding. In the second portion, the citing, it will only require a majority vote, and that's why I have divided the issue. We'll kind of have a two in one. I'm going to ask the Speaker to discuss it in general. I understand Castle Booze is going to make a presentation on it. I'm going to ask for the Finance Committee to make a recommendation, and then we're going to debate each part, and we will vote on each part. Does everyone understand? Okay. Chuck?
Yes, the $150,000, we intend to borrow that with a five-year payment. The intent on that, though, is eventually with the inevitable debt exclusion to the police station project itself, that we would then roll that into it so that only in the first maybe year or so, we would see any expense on that. There has been quite a study been done, which we will introduce later on, the architect, and then we'll speak further on the relocation.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee approves.
Thank you. Would Castle Booze now like to make their presentation on the feasibility study? We have reserved the first row for everyone on the stage, so if you'd like to retire to somewhere where you can see, and we will have just a moment, please.
My name is Joe Maloney. I'm with Castle Booze Architects. Over the past several months, we've been working with the Feasibility Study Committee to review the existing facilities for the police department, fire department, and the town offices. This presentation is a short synopsis of the process, the conclusions, recommendations derived from these meetings. I'll try and be as brief and concise as possible. Next. The study had three main goals. Next. The first was a space needs assessment. Next. The second was an existing condition survey, and the third was a site evaluation. Next slide. A space needs assessment is primarily an analysis of the functions and activities that occur within a building. To do this, we interviewed several staff members, but also this results in a list of rooms and activities and eventually into a building program. We were asked to also not look only at the existing facilities but for future growth down the road. To do this, we didn't use a crystal ball. We did use growth projections in the 2005 Town Master Plan. The ability to plan for growth is one of the benefits of this master plan. Ultimately, times towns will react to a need rather than planning for future growth needs. We conducted several staff interviews with all of the departments as a sanity check. After reviewing and compiling the information from those interviews, we reviewed those lists with each department head. That arrived with a final list for each department. One things that we asked, some things we asked these department heads were what things work well in the buildings there right now, what things didn't work well, what things they would need to have changed to comply with current requirements to do their jobs, et cetera. Next. One of the things that the committee did to try and get an idea of what these facilities we need to have in them is to visit similar facilities that were recently built. They visited police stations in Brewster and Rochester and Town Hall and Carver. One of the things that they looked for is what do these modern facilities have that the facilities in Lakeville might need? How do they function? How are the activities that they have in common with those in Lakeville? How are they positioned in the building and how do they work? Also, they looked at the good characteristics of the buildings that they saw, trying to figure out which things they liked to have in the buildings that they have or in the new buildings that they would build. Next. Lastly, we looked at historical data over the past 20 years. KBA has done several public facility buildings, both municipal and town offices, and we've developed our own master database that allows us to further enhance and refine the program that has arrived at through the staff interviews. Next slide. The second part of the study was an existing condition survey. Next. Not only did we look at the physical conditions of the existing facilities, but we documented the existing facilities photographs. We field measured the existing facilities to provide plans that can be used for future use. We reviewed them with a perspective from architectural viewpoints, structural viewpoints, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, site, sewage, et cetera. We looked at the buildings in relation to current codes, and although these buildings are existing and may not need to comply with current codes, certainly any additions that we would do or renovations would have to comply. It also helps us to review the functions of the existing buildings to see how they operate. Obviously, the current codes are the least acceptable minimum standards that we would have, and we want to exceed that if possible. We'd also like to correlate these building plans with the space needs program developed in the first part of the study. Basically, the first look is to see whether the space needs will fit into the existing buildings. How will they relate to the existing buildings? Will they be able to have departments that need to be adjacent to each other so they function properly in the existing buildings? The police station, which we all know, was built in the 1930s. It was not built as a police station. It's functioned as several different things since then. Several additions have been put on on as-needed basis without future planning. The pump house, which has had also many additions put on, was built in the 1890s, served as a pump house originally, but since then has served also as town offices and a fire station. Some of the issues that we found in reviewing these buildings was that they're not seismically stable, and one of the big issues in Mass. State Building Code is that public safety facilities, which are the primary facilities that you want to have open and functional during an emergency, need to be seismically stable. From this analysis, we learned that where these buildings are not seismically stable, the retrofit for structural for these buildings would be so cost prohibitive that we don't recommend using these buildings for public safety facilities in the future. All the existing buildings we found are undersized for both the current and insufficient for the future space needs of the departments that house them. And also, we found that the pump house, originally owned by the city of Taunton, has a deed restriction that requires it to be maintained as a municipal building. In doing this, where it can't be used as a public safety facility, we'd recommend that the pump house be retained for use as the town offices. Next slide. Oops, keep going, keep going. Last part of the study was site evaluation. Not only did we look at the sites that the buildings are currently residing on, but we also looked at several other sites for possibilities for future growth and development. Next. To do this, we visited several sites, mostly in this area here. We had 12 sites altogether. We looked at them for several different characteristics. Next slide. We compiled over 30 different characteristics of each site, both as a quick reference guide for these sites, but to initially prioritize the sites for their compatibility with the programs that we're looking for in these buildings. Next slide. The sites that were prioritized in this study were moved over onto a site ratings table in which we took the different sites and building combinations and arranged them on the matrix with site characteristics that we found to be very pertinent to the decision-making process. With those, they were assigned a priority number of zero to five, five being the highest, zero being the lowest, and the most preferable sites are identified in yellow on the left, on the right-hand side of the chart. Next slide, please. Following that, we took those sites and the functions of the buildings that we had and arranged them on a site compatibility chart with programming. The black and yellow squares you see on the slide are compatible building and site programs. The gray are secondary and the white are incompatible. The yellow squares indicate the most preferable or the priority compatibility between sites and programs. Out of this, we discerned that in the first case, the police station is most compatible with Site 4C, which is adjacent to the senior center of the Federal Women's Park, and that the fire station and the town hall are most compatible with the current site they reside on, on Bedford Street. Next slide. Recommendations. From this study, we came up with those recommendations. From this study, we came up with those recommendations, and we cited for conceptual plans only, the buildings on the sites that were recommended. The first priority site that was presented by the committee was a police station on Precinct Street. You can see the site. This is Precinct St. running this way. Next slide. One of the things that the committee had as a priority for this station, that they saw in other stations that they liked, was the ability to site the building off of the street behind trees rather than having a strong civic presence. They wanted to have this blend in with the semi-rural residential character of the town. Next slide. And the elevation that we derived from the plan references that. It's a very residential-looking, clovered-sided, one-story building, very nondescript. Next slide. The second priority for the committee was a fire department substation. One thing that we discerned from the review of a fire station was that the need to be centrally located, geographically centrally located in the town, and have adequate response times, was limited to the recommended levels in the southern portion of the town. Looking at that, we discerned that a substation, a very smaller fire station, would be necessary in the southern portion of the town. We haven't determined a site for that or recommended a site because this came up very late in the study. The next slide. As you can see, this is as much smaller than the existing fire station, is three single-depth apparatus bays. It is a fully manned station with both fire and emergency capability. Next slide. The character of the building is certainly looking like a fire station, but it's residential, small-scale in character, and would blend in with the area surroundings. The third recommendation for the committee would be a new fire station on the existing site. Here you can see the existing town hall building here and the fire station here. In order to do this, the existing fire station additions on this end of the building would have to be removed. But the building accomplishes two things. It is geographically centrally located where the existing building is now. It is located on a main road of Bedford Street. In order to provide this building on this site to comply with septic requirements from the DEP, additional land would have to be acquired around this site to have a larger no site for the septic field. Next. This facility is two stories high to accommodate the footprint necessary to put it on this site. It's also smaller in the apparatus bay than the existing facility. This has four bays instead of the six that are currently used. Some of the existing facilities are maintained. We have bunk space, a dispatch area, a day room. Next slide. And the building is given much more dominant presence, being on the main road, being a primary function of the facility. Next slide, please. The final priority out of the study was for renovation of the town offices. Again, this is on the same site that the building currently resides on. This is difficult to do with this angle, but the existing facility is this area, and the additions are here. Next slide. Some of the reasons for citing the building on the site, again, primarily was the fact that we want to retain the use of that building, and unless it's used for municipal functions, it will revert back to Taunton. Secondly, although it's not in the new town center as described in the master plan at the intersection of Route 18 and Precinct Street, it does have a presence on the main road in town. There is a community memory where the building has been used for this function for several years, and it is identified as a civic building. Here, go back. Go back, okay. Here you see in the yellow is, on the first floor of the building, is the existing pump house building, and in the blue beside it are the new additions. We put the primarily public access functions in a wing on the new side of the building, but also it could be accessed by elevator for handicap accessibility and by stair. Also, we reoriented the entrance for accessibility to a new entrance in the middle, which would lead to a large meeting room that is subdivisible just to get your bearings. This space is currently the selectman and administrator's space in the building, and this is a conference room. Next slide, please. Again, the second floor, we have, just above the first floor, more spaces used primarily for the public on the right-hand side in the new wing, and existing functions in the existing building. One thing we tried to do with this design, again, it's only conceptual, is to provide a tower element in the front to provide an offset to the existing tower element of the front of the building. The main entrance is in the center of the building now, between the two elements to guide you in, and we have the new wing on this side. Next, and that's the presentation.
While everyone is coming back to the stage, we have gone beyond the 7:00 opening of the annual town meeting, so I am going to declare a recess of the annual town meeting, but first I must open it. So I am opening the town meeting and now declaring it recessed until we have finished the special. Now we can continue what we were doing. We have received a presentation about the feasibility study, and we have before us a motion, the first part of which, which goes all the way to the word "therefore," has to do with the borrowing for $150,000 for the cost of design. The second portion of it has to do with placing the police station on the recommended site that you saw there, which is roughly between where the old house was as you entered Ted Williams, former Ted Williams camp, and Deer Crossing, which leads to the senior center. And as you saw in the sketch, it is removed from the road somewhat. So we are going to discuss, since I am dividing this article right now, only the first part, the borrowing of the money for the design. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Marshall?
Point of information, Mr. Moderator. I don't see the word "therefore." I'd like to have it clarified.
It says, "or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore."
What line are we on?
Oh, it's not in yours? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's in the motion.
It's in the motion. I'm sorry. I will read the part we're discussing, okay?
Okay, thank you.
"I move that the town vote that the sum of $150,000 be and hereby is appropriated to pay costs of designing a new police station, including but not limited to the hiring of architects, engineers, a project manager, and other professionals for the preparation of designs, working drawings, bid documents, and related material, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectman is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, parentheses 21 of general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore."
So we're not discussing a fire station. We're only discussing a police station?
We are discussing the police station only and the designing of the police station.
Thank you.
And the giving permission to bond $150,000 when they so choose to design it. Okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none. This is going to require a two-thirds vote, because we are bonding, and I need the tellers to count. All in favor of the first portion of this article, please raise your cards, and the tellers, please count.
Fifty-three.
Thank you.
Could you remind the people that they have to be sitting down to vote?
Yes. In order to be able to vote, you must be seated in the auditorium. You can't be standing in the back. And I direct the counters not to count anyone who's standing. Yes?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. Thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to this first division, please raise your cards.
Six.
Six.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Seven.
The vote is 169 affirmative, 25 negative. I declare that it has passed by more than two-thirds. We now will discuss the second part of this warrant article, and that has to do with the location of the police station and also petitioning the general court for that location. Do you wish to speak to that, Mr. Evers? First?
Yes, I will. Before I do that, I'd like to thank the committee that worked hard on this. Mark Sorrell, our police chief; Dan Hopkins, our fire chief; Janet Black, Jay Catalano, Tracy Craig, Rita Gobert, Deb McCanny, Jim Merritt, Cindy McCray, David Moore, Kevin St. George, and Nancy Yates. There's many, many hours that went into meeting with the architects, reviewing all the statistics and information that was gathered, and they did a very good job, and tonight is the culmination of that. But it should also be noted that this first $150,000 is only the very first step in a very large project that the town hopefully will undertake, which will lead to all of the buildings and renovations that were presented to you by the architect. And in order to, you might have been confused by seeing a substation for the fire department, but there's two issues that involve that, and that is the response time to the high school, middle school campus. This campus here exceeds what's allowable from the current facility. And also, you cannot demolish, obviously, the current facility unless you have some sort of department or place that you can house the fire department temporarily while that's being done. But that has to do with the fire department. The police department relocating what we want to do on the police department to the Precinct Street site, we met quite a bit with the, we met with the park commissioners regarding taking of that land. We have offered, which we will offer at state legislation if we're successful here this evening, the 31-acre parcel that's on Pickens Street, which has about approximately eight acres of land that could be used for soccer fields or other recreational use. I think it's important that we do move ahead with the police station as our first attack, if you will. We've been putting them off for quite some time. As we all know, we've done schools, won school money, grant money was available. We've done libraries, when library grant money was available. We've done a lot of things. The Betty's Neck property. Many, many times, we've been able to do things in this town, and now it's time, I think, we step up. There could be some grant money coming down. There were some hints of it at the State House. The two chiefs went in to testify with Representative Canessa a couple of weeks ago, that there could be some money that the governor might release on state funding, which, if we can get this part of it done, it doesn't, voting the money is only one step. Voting the relocation so that we can design the building that goes on that parcel is the next step, and that's what we need to do.
Thank you. I'm glad we're not talking about the fire substation, because they had located it on the slide next door to my house. Will the finance committee have a report?
The finance committee approves expending the money, which town meeting has voted. We don't consider it our place to vote.
Okay.
Although we do approve using town-owned land, so we don't have to purchase it.
Okay. Does anyone have something they wish to offer? Mr. Marshall?
Bob Marshall. I'm very curious, not that I object, I'm just curious, what were the reasons why we chose the Precinct Street site versus, say, Route 18 side or what have you?
Mr. Evers?
The park commission did not look favorably on us taking land on Route 18 for the police station. They would prefer--
Is there a reason why?
I think the park commission might want to comment on it, but can you, Mr. Evers?
Well, they were mostly concerned that we would, actually, if we put it next to the tennis club, the area that would have to be cut would be the entire area, and you'd clear cut all the way from the street to the park. There would not be a tree there. It would be right through, just like, it would look like Bridgewater when you ride up Route 18 in Bridgewater, and you look through across your fields, and you look all the way across everything right from the road.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I guess, I wasn't necessarily thinking, and I don't know where I got this idea, but I wasn't necessarily thinking about right next to, you know, the existing athletic club, but more or less directly opposite the existing police station. I have no idea where I got that idea, but I'm just curious, was that looked into?
Is anyone going to handle that? Okay.
Dan Hopkins, I'm on the park commission. Why we didn't pick that area was that was the last big area of open land that the camp has. If you go inside the camp, it's all wetlands, so that's why the area is, we wanted to keep that, we wanted to keep that area open.
Anyone else have a question? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote, and this is a simple majority vote. All in favor of the location and the possible petitioning of the legislature for that location, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to that, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. I declare that it has passed by majority vote. This ends the special town meeting, and I declare the special town meeting dissolved. We will now begin the annual town meeting in one second. So moved, seconded. All in favor of dissolving?
All opposed.
We are dissolved.
Are these the fourth?
Yeah.
It was easier to just--
I would say cut off the other part. I'm gonna put the photo on it. Did you hear that? Okay. Okay. Run for your moderator. He can be a little bear. Okay.
I'm going to say it before we do our--
That's fine.
A quorum being present, the annual town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this annual town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on May 21, 2007. It was published in the May 24, 2007 edition of the Middle Borough Gazette and was posted by Constable Patrick Kearney on May 25, 2007. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the general bylaws of the town and Chapter 30-- of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The tellers will remain as the tellers appointed for the special town meeting. Nothing else has changed, except that when a motion comes to a vote, we only will count this colored card, and I got it right this time. A gentle reminder that no food or drink is allowed, except water, please. I will ask again, does anyone require a copy of the warrant? Okay. No one does. So before I start Article 1, Selectwoman Nancy Yates has a request to make, and she wishes to make it before I begin.
I would like to thank everyone that served the town of Lakeville this year and in the past few years on the boards and committees. A problem we seem to have is that the same people volunteer over and over again and are doing a lion's share of the work. So what I'm looking for tonight is if there's anyone that is interested in serving on a board or committee for the town. There are some applications here. There are several ways you can go about it. There's some applications here that we'll leave up front. You can go on our Town of Lakeville website. You can go to the beginning of the town report. You can come into the selectmen's office and talk to Rita or any one of us, and we'll tell you what's entailed. Some of the boards that need members are the zoning board of appeals, the water study board, the conservation commission, and the open space committee. And anything you're interested in serving on, I'm sure there would be room for you. So please, let's give a round of applause to all the volunteers and hope we get some more. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Before we go to Article 1, I need to have a motion waiving the reading of the warrant. May I second it? No discussion. All in favor of waiving the reading of the warrant, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no one opposed. I declare it passed by unanimous consent. Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $146,322 to pay the salaries of all elected officers.
Thank you. I will read the total amounts. If anyone has a hold on any particular amount, please state "hold" and raise your hand up. I will write the word "hold" on it, and when I have finished reading all of Article 1, I will ask you to please stand up and ask what your reason for your hold is. If there are no holds, we will then simply vote yes or no on Article 1. Moderator personnel, that's me, $150. Selectman personnel, $10,000. Assessors personnel, $10,000. Board of Health personnel, $10,000. Treasurer and collector personnel, $61,525. Town clerk personnel, $54,647. Hold on town clerk personnel? Highway personnel, zero, because that's now an appointed position. I have one hold. Town clerk personnel, $54,647. Would the person who asked for the hold please come forward and speak to it?
Myrtle Seamus, I just would like to know why the longevity is so much less here? Is it because the other ones were for Sandy? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's an easy removal of a hold. Seeing no further questions, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of Article 1 as read, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare Article 1 passed unanimously. Before I move to Article 2, I am going to again ask your permission that sometime today we may ask the Department of Public Works Superintendent Chris Beck, the police chief Mark Sorrell, the principal of Assawamset School Laurie Hunter to speak, and none of them are residents of the town. Is there any objection to them speaking at this annual town meeting? Seeing no objection, I therefore declare your unanimous consent to their speaking. Article 2.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $12,553,057, appropriate $159,087 from free cash, transfer and appropriate $400,000 from the stabilization fund, transfer and appropriate $16,528 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, transfer and appropriate $2,500 expendable cemetery trust interest, appropriate $45,000 from free cash and transfer to Park Enterprise, appropriate $71,505 to Park Enterprise, and $375,000 to Landfill Enterprise from revenues expenses to defray town expenses for the fiscal period July 1st, 2007 to June 30th, 2008 inclusive.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I am going to read the finance committee recommendation, total by total. I will try and not do it too fast. If I am going too fast, please somebody say, point of order, sir, too fast, because you get carried away with this. Selectman personnel, $226,594. If anyone has a hold, please say so, and we will come back to it. Selectman expenses, $29,800. Finance committee expenses, $1,000. Accounting personnel, Accounting expense, $52,920. Assessors personnel, $113,788. Assessors expenses, $27,370. Treasurer and collector personnel, $121,027. Treasurer and collector expenses, $37,500. Law expenses, $40,000. Wage and personnel board total, $600. Town clerk personnel, $40,520. Town clerk expenses, $1,300. Election expenses, $10,000. Registration expenses, $6,800. Conservation commission personnel, $10,600. Conservation commission expense, zero. Planning board expense, $250. Appeals board expense, $650. Historic townhouse expense, $3,400. Town office and fire station expenses, $120,000. Town report expenses, $1,000. Cable TV advisory expenses, $3,000. Other general government expenses, $18,002. Police department personnel, $1,355,218. Police department expenses, $134,900. Fire department personnel, $808,236. Fire department expense, $101,785. Building inspector personnel, $103,384. Building inspector expense, $5,100. Gas inspector expenses, $8,000. Plumbing inspector expenses, $8,000. Sealor of weights and measures expenses, $1,600. Electrical inspector expense, $15,000. Animal inspector expense, $6,000. Civil defense personnel, $4,080. Civil defense expense, $2. Well, it's better than nothing. Animal shelter dog officer personnel, $68,294. Animal shelter dog officer expense, $18,800. Total school K through four.
Hold.
Well, the recommendation at any rate was $4,955,613. Now, I'll be coming back to that. Highway department personnel, $418,897. Highway department expense, $122,600. Snow and ice expense, $30,000. Street lighting expense, $14,000. Cemetery service expense, $2,500. Board of Health personnel, $145,995. Board of Health expense, $21,200. Board of Health visiting nurse expense, $4,000. Council on Aging personnel, $107,924. Council on Aging expense, $27,300. Veterans Benefit personnel, $5,367. Veterans Benefit expense, $15,150. Library personnel, $170,750. Library expense, $95,500. Total historic library building, $3,000. Historical commission expense, $500. Debt service, $121,868. Regional assessments one- I'm sorry, regional assessments expense, $1,587. Unemployment expense, $1,000. Employee benefits, $2,158,514. Property and liability insurance, $190,000. Park Enterprise personnel, $52,229. Park Enterprise expense, $64,276. Park Enterprise revenue, minus $116,505. Landfill transfer enterprise personnel, $150,500. Landfill transfer enterprise expense, $204,500. Landfill transfer capped expense, $20,000. Total landfill enterprise revenues, minus $375,000, and that's the budget. We have one hold. The hold is on K through four schools. The recommended amount by the finance committee was $4,955,613. Will the person or representing the person who put it on hold care to speak?
Mr. Moderator, David Goodfellow, 29 Baker Lane, Chairman of the Lakeville School Committee, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from available stabilization funds, a sum of $93,400, to increase the FYOA operating budget of the Lakeville Elementary School. The increase will be from $4,955,613 to $5,49,613, submitted by the Lakeville School Committee.
Five, comma, zero, four, nine, comma. Got it. Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded to amend the amount recommended by the finance committee, and the maker of the amendment may first speak before I go to the finance committee. Mr. Goodfellow?
Do you want to defer?
I'll yield to the finance committee.
Finance committee?
Yes. The finance committee took a vote immediately before this meeting, and we unanimously support this motion from the local school committee. A number of things have happened during the budgeting cycle. We found out within the last week that a $44,000 grant that we have received for the special needs pre-K program, we no longer qualify for. There is no chance that we will qualify for it. Because this is a special needs-based program, that position has to be funded no matter what. This budget has been combed through and gone over until it squeaks. The original school committee recommendation was $217,000 and change, higher than the original finance committee recommendation. If we were to give them that $217,000, which we're not going to do, but even if they had that $217,000, that would be an adequate amount to fund and run the school, adequate to good. The demands that are being put on the school are extreme. Now, remember too, please, this is not just Assawamset. This also incorporates the fourth grade over at the intermediate school. And those of you who've been to town meeting and have children and have been involved in this realize that that school was short-funded to start with, and that situation has compounded itself over the years. While no one sitting up here on this platform advocates using the stabilization fund as the primary method of funding operating budgets, the elementary school program has nowhere to go. The special needs items come first. Those come off the top. We have no choice about those things, and the children who are there, who are trying to get an education and do all of the things that we want them to do, are the ones who get hurt by this policy. Without this $94,600, the- a retiring teacher will not be replaced. Class sizes will go up. There is a desperate need for an adjustment counselor at the intermediate school. Our share of that person is $14,000. Without this additional money, that position will go unfilled. The intermediate school has no paper. The intermediate school is borrowing paper from the superintendent's office. I took in a case of it that I had kicking around the house from a business that we closed because they need it. We're not talking bells and whistles here. They share textbooks in a number of classes because they don't have enough money for the textbooks. We're not talking about funding a lavish education. What this money provides is barely adequate for these children, and we, as a community, are going to have to take a look at this. We're going to have to take a look at the revenue side as well. As unpleasant is the thought of taking this money out of stabilization fund is to the finance committee in general, and to me in particular, not doing it is inappropriate and irresponsible on our parts. So I certainly hope that you will support this. If you have questions about specific items that that money encompasses, please feel free to ask them. We are trying to make this as transparent as possible for you so that you can see exactly what is there, and perhaps more critically this time, what is not there. So if you have to ask questions before you vote, please do.
I'm going to ask the selectmen if they have something they wish to say relative to this amendment. Also, I understand there is a 27-slide presentation from the school principal if we need further clarification as to what some of this money is going to be spent for, but we're delaying that right now because it may or may not be necessary to show it. Selectman, do you have something you wish to say to this?
Yes, I do. I think-
Are you speaking for all of you?
I will- you want me to speak for everybody? Okay. I was going to say we could all speak also, but I think what the selectmen are opposed to is how this all came about. I have to say very honestly, we did not know until last Wednesday night, when Derek and I went to a school committee meeting, where these cuts were going to come from. We have asked repeatedly, over and over again. We would have liked to have planned for this. We don't like finding out tonight the number. That's when we found out what this number was, is tonight. I feel that the town has cut everything we can. We're responsible for the safety and welfare of the entire town of Lakeville. Our stabilization fund, a safe number for your stabilization fund would be 5% of your town budget, and that would be $1,085. What we have right now in our stabilization fund is- $963, okay, and minus the $400 that we're taking out because we need to borrow it to balance our own budget, and we plan on putting it back when we get national development online. Our problem with our town budget is we have Proposition 2 and 1/2, and that only gives us so much money to spend. Lakeville Hospital's been postponed for almost five years, and when we start getting that money in, we'll be in much better shape. So right now, we have to borrow to balance our budget, $400,000. It's the whole town budget out of stabilization to balance our budget. So that doesn't leave us with very much. If we were going to take out what the school department would like, it's going to leave us with 2.17% of our town budget in stabilization, which we need for an emergency. So I believe- So I believe if we had had a little more time to try to figure this out, we could have done a better job with trying to come up with some of that money. I feel right now that if any extra money comes in, or some of these capital projects start to go, that we could call a special town meeting in the fall, and if there's any additional funds, that we could allocate it. I find it very dangerous to deplete our stabilization fund down to that amount. I know the schools need more money. We all need more money. We've cut every single budget. We've cut our snow and ice. We've cut our legal fund. We've cut everything in the town. Everybody's in the same shape. There's only so much money, and everybody wants it. And there's only so much to go around. Anybody else?
Who wishes to speak next?
David Goodfellow.
Okay. I mean, you've been standing there, so-
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would just simply say that, you know, the school is in a state of emergency, that we absolutely, we're not, we don't want these funds. We need these funds. We need these funds to be able to offer the appropriate level of services to the students. When you find yourself in extraordinary times, you do have to make extraordinary steps to fund your budget. And it had been a practice in the past not to utilize stabilization funds for these types of things. However, I really see no alternative, and I definitely, definitely do see it necessary. You know, the Lakeville School Committee has been working on this budget nonstop. Last Friday, we found out that we were going to find ourselves ineligible for that $44,000 grant that had been spoken about by the Finance Committee earlier. So I mean, we're reacting to this information as we get it, and I'd simply offer that as the reason that, you know, something as dynamic as a school, you know, has to be dealt with as dynamic as that. And we'd certainly be happy to answer any questions as to the need for these additional funds.
There's someone standing behind you. Do you wish to speak?
Yes, I'm the school.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Barbara Mankowski. I'm here tonight to talk to you guys not just as a taxpayer, and not as a mother of two children in the school system, but also as a real estate professional. I'm selling, I represent banks, dealing on a national level, and I can tell you with, from my professional experience, that schools have a direct and significant impact on real estate values. I can personally tell you that I'm not terribly pleased with where we're going with our schools here in Lakeville. I don't know the fine art of managing budgets or managing town finances. I don't know everything that's involved. It certainly seems quite complicated, and I applaud those that have done a very good job managing our finances to date. But whatever it takes to get done, it needs to be taken care of. It's not to the standard that it should be, and those of you that don't have children in the schools may not realize that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you're next.
Deborah Canning, I just want to say that depleting the stabilization fund to that level will affect our bond rating in some way in the money that, or interest rates that we'll get to borrow in the future.
Thank you.
So I just want to state that.
Yes.
My name is Dick Scott, Busch Pond Road. It sounds to me like there was a lack of communication on this budget, and given what both the school committee representative and the selectman have said, I think it's imperative that we not have these kinds of things thrust upon us. It sounds to me like somebody knew we were going to be short of money somewhere along the line, and I would encourage, as we go forward in this next budgeting process, we just spent money to move ahead with the police department, et cetera. So since we're on the edge of financial crisis, I think the one thing that is absolutely is imperative is an increased level of communications. And there's going to be disagreements, but somehow it seems to me that that would be the message from this particular vote, is let's start talking some more, and if we're going to have to go out for more money, now's the time to go ahead and start laying the groundwork for it.
Mr. Seamus?
Joe Seamus. As a former chairman of the Finance Committee, I always advocated not touching the stabilization fund for anything but capital costs and emergencies. I consider this an emergency. When you consider our value system, our children, of course, I think are number one. And when you are in a situation- And when you are in a situation like this, an emergency situation, you take extraordinary measures. And this is an extraordinary measure that I support. And it's hard for me to say this because for years I've advocated that position, so I'm moving back from it, but as I think of those youngsters and our obligation to our young people, we should vote the extra money. There was an old adage, "You judge a community by how it treats its elderly and its very young." So let's stand up and treat our young as they should be treated. Thank you.
Mr. Baneski, Nancy Yates?
Joe Baneski. The question is, it's coming up, it seems that there's a multiple choices on the amount of money. Are it teachers, are it paper, other supplies?
Would you like the slideshow?
I guess it comes down, is there a way to get the important items that you need, all right? Whatever that comes out to be. It's not $93,000 worth. It's some amount, maybe 40, maybe 50, whatever. And the other amounts, such as paper or some other supplies that are required, can be done through, we've got a playground by donations, maybe some other method to come around so that we're not taking everything from the stabilization fund, but some other method to raise the funds for the additional, not the emergency.
Nancy?
I just want everybody to remember that you're using one-time money for an operating budget if you vote this out of stabilization. What is going to happen next year? All right? If we need more money for the school department, then I think that some of the parents and the people that have the children in school need to start mounting a campaign right now for an override next year, because it's only going to be twice as bad next year. A million-dollar bond is being cashed in at the regional level this year to balance the budget. That's one-time funds. It's the same thing with the stabilization. This is a one-time fund that you're using to balance your operating budget. What's going to happen next year? Where's that money going to come from next year? Stabilization is going to be way down. There is a huge problem. We're all in a state of emergency. The entire town is in a state of an emergency. How about, I think children should be at the top of the list too, but what happens when something happens to your child and the ambulance is broken down because we didn't get a new ambulance and it can't get there to get you to the hospital? I mean, what happens when the streets don't get plowed? There are a lot of things that, the whole, everyone's in an emergency. So the choice is yours. You just need to know all the sides and all the angles.
Mr. Hurt?
Don't kill me, Yates.
No.
But, um, one important thing to know, I've been going to a lot of these budget meetings, especially where the schools are concerned. And in deference to Mr. Baneski, there isn't any dollars, there isn't any pennies that aren't superfluous, that are superfluous in any way whatsoever. This is a little bit less than bare bones as it currently stands. For the past several years, we've been giving you what we were calling a level services budget. Not level funded, but it meant that we got to maintain basic supplies, we got to maintain all staff. What wasn't properly explained was that the numbers of kids, that the demands on the system, demands on each and every one of those dollars were actually still going up. So level service was probably not even a fair word, because the population was continually being served to a lower degree. Our school budgets are stretched as thin as they possibly can be, and there's nobody up here at this table that's at fault. Look at any of the towns around you and see what's happening. We should salute ourselves, everybody in this room, the folks up at the front of the table that are actually still making it, that were still putting it together. People say the danger is over, and I am not a proponent, but there's going to have to be a different revenue source for next year, because we're looking at one-time funding, no matter how you slice it. And we're going to have to take a very, very hard look at program across the board to deliver a much better program that actually serves the population the way that we, the general folks out in this room, think it's being served. And what we're going to need to see is very hard facts on the classrooms that actually may have 36 kids in them. Does everybody realize that? That may not be at elementary, but we're going towards that in sixth grade, okay? I think there's a general expectation that because we put a lot of dollars into opera, I'm sorry, into capital cost to improve the system, that somehow operating just flowed with that. It hasn't. In terms of this particular questions, it's bare bones. It's about the kids. They cannot handle having one more thing taken away from them. Again, sorry, Yates.
Mr. Goodfellow?
I just would like to add that, you know, what we came up with, we worked, you know, on this budget for a great deal of time, and the $200,000 and change number that we had come up with earlier represented needs, real needs. There was nothing in there that we saw that was superfluous. We were able to, there's, we know where all this money's going to go. We know exactly where all this money is going to go. We're not going to guess after this evening whether or not we're going to buy paper with it, or we're going to go buy pencils with it. We know exactly what, everything is going to be funded. And I would just like to make the point that Lakeville is the third lowest in the state for per pupil expenditure. I expect that we will remain in that position with this budget. But I just wanted to let everyone know that, that we are not going to guess where this money's going. We already know where this money's going. Thank you.
Mrs. Marsh? Bend it toward you. There you go.
Ann Marsh, Elbasto Street, former chairman of the Finance Committee. Having done this budget for 18 years, realizing what this last-minute situation is, I think we need to caution for the future, the need for this not to happen. This town meeting should have been held first week of May, second week of May, if we had gone on the normal schedule. We wouldn't even be here tonight. This emergency would have come up, it would have been dealt with in the fall. Other department emergencies could have come up. It's just a very dangerous precedence to have it come up at this time. And as Joe Seamus spoke to, the stabilization, it was almost a religious experience. The money went in there for one-time deals. It was never intended for capital, for operating budgets, and it's a dangerous precedence, because as every other department head sits here, next spring, there's no reason for them not to think that their needs are not equal. So I would just caution, having been involved with the capital planning expenditure committee a little bit this year. Last-minute requests don't work. They have got to be done in the timeframe so that the committees making recommendations can do them in a timely fashion and not come here tonight with a last-minute change. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
It seems to me if somebody's gone to the trouble of preparing the slideshow, we ought to at least see it. In the spirit of having people in the community start looking ahead to the fact that we are going to go for an override in one shape or another, perhaps it would be a good idea if we start the discussion with some information that we wouldn't get perhaps any other way.
Slideshow, okay? You don't really vote on a slideshow. Please hold a minute. I just want a show of hands, and this isn't a vote of any kind. It's just a, an indication of your will. How many people would like to see about 27 slides as to the problems and possible results as a result of this money? Raise your hands, please. Thank you. All opposed to the slides? We just want to move on. It's half and half, so I've got to, I've got to solve the problem of which half, right? So we're going to see slides. No, I don't do that. We're going to move ourselves off the stage. Is Ms. Hunter ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Would you like it from here?
Principal Hunter is going to moder, uh, moderate, is going to indicate what each of the slides shows, and we hope to be less than 20 minutes, yes?
Oh, well less. Go ahead. This is meant just to be an overview of some of the things that we're going to be lacking with the 4.9 number. That's a little bit of history. The original vote was at 5.3. The number amended on the 2nd of May was 5.1, the selectmen's budget, and then the number you've heard tonight. Go ahead. Each slide represents one item, so I can speak to them quite quickly. Probably top of our list this evening is the fact that the 4.9 would require the loss of a classroom teacher. We would not fiscally be able to replace the classroom teacher who is retiring. Go ahead. Obviously, that's going to lead to increased class size. We would have to examine where the need is and reconfigure our grade levels in order to try to minimize that, obviously, but certainly some, some grade level somewhere of approximately 150 children would need larger classes. Go ahead. One of our biggest struggles is in instructional materials. The 4.9 budget allows us only absolute basics, and even that is, at best, going to do paper, crayons, pencils, minimal, minimal basic supplies for the school year. Next. We've had MCAS tutoring available for a very small group of children before school hours. We have great concerns over our grade four test performance scores. We are not making the state requirements and federal requirements at this particular point, so to us, this is a huge loss. Next. Inability to budget for math workbooks. We have a new math program which requires these workbooks in order for the program to work. The 4.9 budget does not allow us to budget that for any of the children in the building. Next. Obviously, our utility costs are always of concern. Right now, the 4.9 allows us absolutely no wiggle room. The numbers that are there would have to hold, or we would be dipping into either instructional areas or probably into staff. Inadequate special education or remedial service. Every year, we stretch these people thinner and thinner. We haven't added new positions in at least five years, and certainly our needs have grown. Obviously, we then can't intervene early, and we then create longer-term problems which ultimately require more resources. Limited professional development. This is the key to what enhances and makes instructional improvements, obviously affecting student achievement. Obviously, another issue for us is maintaining the facility. Assawamsted's a dated facility that hasn't had any major work done to it outside of the roof since 1988, and this becomes of more and more concern. The 4.9 budget would allow us annual inspections and very, very minimal routine maintenance. There's no ability to be proactive, or even to chip away at the larger issues. One emergency will come back at us. The outdated resources. We've been trying to replace maps throughout the building. We were able to do about half of the building this year. We were hoping to do the other half next, but that's been taken out. Again, back to the unplanned four issues, which normally we have money for, maternity leaves. I've had one at least every year for the last eight years. There's a very minimal amount that would certainly not cover a three-month leave. Long-term sick leaves, tutoring for sick children, any other extended services, all of that's been wiped out. Any issues there, which, many of which are mandated or contractual, would need to be covered from another source. At the intermediate school, I speak on behalf of Mrs. Bobian for the fourth grade. There's no adjustment counselor, so oftentimes, children are not getting the regular counseling support that they need. There's a person there one day a week right now. That lack of regular support, and in fact, did lead to a student needing to go out of district this past fall. Lack of curriculum leadership. All the other buildings, K-12, have a teacher for each of the major subject areas. The intermediate school does not have their own people, and thus, we have this big gap between the K-4 group and then the 6th through 12th group, and we really were hoping to fill that gap to improve our instruction. The fourth grade, they are sharing textbooks as we speak. There are sets of books that go back and forth between classrooms. This obviously limits the teacher's use of them, and certainly the ability for them to go home. Basic supplies, again, we've talked on this tonight. The intermediate school's been underfunded since it opened, requiring rationing of basic, basic needs. Again, the MCAS tutoring, which we've had in place at grade four this past year. One piece to know, the grade four concern goes on. If this year's test scores are not adequate to meet the yearly performance requirement, the DOE will mandate at some point that we need to intervene, and they will not provide us funding to do that. That will be on us to figure out. Again, instructional supplies. We're stuck at basic supplies in the 4.9 budget and trying to make it through that. We do not see the ability to purchase any instructional materials for any of the subject areas. So this is a total of $150,000. So this is a total of 150,000. The recommendation is an increase of only 150,000 over last year. Go ahead. Our contractual increases between the buildings was 180,000. Utility costs are up over 30,000, and still somewhat unknown. Go ahead. And then, of course, the grants you've heard about tonight. One is our Title I grant, which helps us to provide remedial services. Every year, this goes down as our demographics go into the state, so we're expecting we may have another 5,000 to absorb there. We don't even have that number till Friday. And then, the preschool issue, which came up last week. Again, we're going to finalize that. There's been a lot about communication, and I don't want to spend time on that, but obviously, the question is why are we here tonight, and certainly not a little sooner. This has been building slowly. We've been stretching our dollars thinner and thinner every single year. It's to the credit of the people in your building so that you're getting what you're getting for service. There's no doubt in my mind. And without that attitude that we'll just do whatever it takes, you wouldn't be having the schools that you have. Go ahead. There's your source for the third-to-lowest-per-pupil data, if you're interested. Go ahead. And then, of course, tonight, you know, why are we here tonight? Well, I think it all came crashing on us. We stretched and stretched and stretched. We looked at the 4.9 and tried to stretch that as far as we could, and we came up short on people, finally. Finally, it's people. And your greatest resource, as I just said, are the people in the building. And if we're now starting to cut staff, we've cut absolutely everything else in this 4.9 budget. I think, too, it's time that we let you know how much we're struggling. I think we make it look like we're doing just fine, and we sort of liked it that way because we thought that was our job. And now, you need to know that we're just not making it anymore. The time's come for you to hear the concerns, hear the issues, and to be more educated. And then, my, my little emotional tug to you at the end. Clearly, every child in those buildings only comes through once, and whatever opportunities they get while they're there, they're gone. When those children pass on, whether we fix it next year or not, that child was only in second grade once. So I'd ask you to strongly take these factors in mind as you make your decisions tonight.
Going to wait till everybody gets back on the stage, and Mr. Evers had his hand up, so I'm going to let him speak first.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a few points, and it is very difficult to be asked to fund or not fund a child's education. But I think it needs to be said that some of the expenses that we incurred this year that we had absolutely no choice over, and has forced us to ask other departments to cut their staffing and their expenses, is there's approximately $300,000 increase that went to the health insurance this year, which was about a 15% increase over last year. There was $100,000 more that has to go to our pension contribution, which is about a 20% increase from last year. We did increase the school's budget by 4% from what it was last year. Now, we had, we, we had approximately just under $250,000 of extra funds that we could divvy up around the town. And we gave them, what's it?
24980.
The exact number was 249818 is what we had for available funds extra from last year. And we differ on the 150 over last year's budget because it was a special town meeting in the fall that took $46,000. They gave us back $46,000. So of the 249 and change that we had extra, we gave the school committee an additional $196,000 of that. So we only kept just barely $50,000 that we divvied up amongst everybody else in town. And using the stabilization fund, as everybody has said, or some others have said, is not a good idea to bring it down so low that your rainy-day fund will run out of water, and when it rains, there's nothing to go get.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
At the risk of disputing my wife and risking familial disharmony, she, she made some points earlier. She indicated that this was a last-minute request. I would respectfully disagree. I think the original request for increase was over 200,000. It's now down to 93. It has the support of the Finance Committee. We have already crossed the hurdle of using a substantial amount from our stabilization account. Granted, Nancy indicated that that's going to be replaced, but frankly, we've been hearing about national's development for quite some time now. And I don't dispute what you're saying, Nancy. It may well come online this year, but it may not. And, and I would say that, you know, the kids only get one opportunity to bite at the apple, and with respect to when this figure came to our knowledge, the budget was very late coming to us. That is, the money coming out of the, from the state. So I think those are some issues that should be taken into consideration.
Yes, sir.
Martin Grossman, O'Neil Drive. I mean, it looks like our elementary school budget is bare bones, if not below bare bones, and I'm just appalled how low it's gotten. I think we need, you know, whereas none of us like the idea of remove, take money from the stabilization fund, that doesn't seem to be any other choice. I'm hoping in next year, year after, until that national development property, you know, starts earning us money, maybe we have to come up with other forms of income for the town, be it an override or debt exclusion. You know, we shouldn't let our school system get this low again.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Bob Poole, South Kingman Street. This sounds like to me, before I saw the slideshow, that it was something that was going to vote for, you know, 92,000, 96,000, whatever, but it looks like just a Band-Aid being put on top of this. And I have children, I have three-year-old twins that are going to go to school here. And one of my major concerns was, when I saw the, the original fire station and police station, it's made me jump back. Why, why, why? We really should take a look at what the kids need and not make this a quick change on what we're going to have for a fire department or police station, because that's the number-one thing. The number-one thing in my mind is my kids. I went to school here, and we didn't have any money. I've been here for 42 years. And my reason for being up here right now is I think that instead of taking money from the fund right now, because we really don't know how much money we need, we should take a good look at this, and in the next couple of years, take a look and say, hey, does the fire department have to have five roofs on it? Does it have, does the police station have to have five roofs going the other way? You know, I mean, everybody would like to have better items where they work. I'm a nurse, I'm a machinist, I'm a business owner, and I go with bare bones to make it every day.
Actually, that's exactly right. It's a Band-Aid for the problem, and my greatest fear is that if this money is voted out of stabilization, then everyone is going to go away and say it's all right for this year. And then, next year's going to come, and nobody's going to be working this next year towards the solution to the problem. Another thing, just for the record, National Development has already started their asbestos abatement. It will take about eight weeks, and then, after that, demolition will start, and that will take about eight weeks. So they are finally starting. Not saying when they're going to be finished, but they have started.
Mr. Marshall?
With respect to the previous speaker before Nancy, I, I don't think it's a good idea that we, you know, not vote for the police or fire. If you've been in the police station in particular, I think most people recognize that they have some very, very serious needs. Not that the fire station doesn't, but I, I wouldn't say we need to, we should rob Peter to pay Paul. Granted, there's only so much money in the well, but I think it's been mentioned a number of times here tonight that we need to address another revenue source, which I think is what Nancy and others are getting at, and I think we really need to consider that.
Call for the motion?
No, you're not up here. Yes.
Stole my line. Just Phil Olivero, County Road. I just wanted to, to echo what Mr. Marshall said, that we have a lot of needs that we've been looking at with fire and police, and this is one of the worst years in state funding that, that I've seen as a member of the school committee for almost seven years. And I think it's, it's to the credit of the, of the folks up here that, that we've had such a good fiscal discipline in our town. But this is the worst I've seen in seven to eight years, and I think that the, the stabilization fund, if it's to be used for this, it's the right use of it versus going back into the budget and looking at some of the other departments, which all have needs, and I believe those needs are being funded at their bare bones with this budget, given the state aid. So that's just my thoughts, and with that, I'd like to call a question.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to call the question. That has to be passed by two-thirds and is non-debatable, so we are going to call the question. Counters, I'm going to ask you to count. Well, let's try it without first. All in favor of calling the question, please raise your cards. This ends debate. There will be no more debate on the issue. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to cutting off debate. I see no opposition, so the question has been called. We will now vote on this addition to the, the amount of $93,400 as a, as an addition to the recommended amount originally stated. So it's an increase from 4,095,5613 to 5,049,613. It's a two-thirds vote because it's taking it from stabilization, so I am absolutely going to have to have a count. So tellers, are you ready? Thank you. Everyone in favor of the additional money, please raise your cards, and tellers, please count.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. 48, yes.
Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards. 3. 13. 19. 35, and that means a total of 151, 35. Needs 125 to pass, and it got 151, so it passes by the two-thirds. We are now going to have to vote on the rest of Article II as read by me. And it also is going to require a two-thirds vote because there is money taken for stabilization to fund some of those. So we are going to have to have another vote for the rest of the budget now. All, and counters are going to have to count again. All in favor of the entire Article II, except what we've already passed, please raise your cards. 53, yes.
76.
76, yes. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to the rest of the budget, please raise your cards. 0.
0. 1.
1. The vote is 182 to 1. It passes by more than two-thirds. Article II is passed. Article III.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate for the use of the trustees for the county Cooperative Extension Service the sum of $200, and to set the length of the term of the town director at one year as provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter 128, Section 41 and 42.
Thank you. Do you have a second to the motion? Seconded. Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it?
Mr. Moderator, this is our share of the county Cooperative Extension to pay for the director.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, we need a majority vote. All in favor of this motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to this motion, please raise your cards. I see no cards. I declare Article III passed by unanimous consent. Article IV.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 587, oh, excuse me, 580,767 dollars as the share of the Town of Lakeville and the Plymouth County Retirement Association.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it?
This is the town's contribution to the retirement for Plymouth County.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves.
Anyone care to comment? Seeing no one caring to comment, we will move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of Article IV, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article IV, you may raise your cards. I see no cards. I declare that it is passed by unanimous consent. Article V.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 673,066 dollars as the town's share of the 2007, 2008 maintenance and operating budget for the Old Colony Regional Vocational High School District to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the towns of Acushnet, Carver, Matapoyset, and Rochester.
Thank you. May I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Marshall?
Simply that this figure actually is almost $12,000 less than what we originally expected due to a change in Chapter 70 money and reconfiguration of town assessments.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee approves.
Anyone care to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote on Article V. Requires a majority. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare Article V to have passed unanimously. Article VI.
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Shea, Freetown Lakeville Regional School Committee?
Yes.
I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 5,798,898 dollars as the town's share of the 2007, 2008 maintenance and operating budget for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District, consisting of the non-excluded debt assessment of $93,364, and excluded debt assessment of $564,659, and the operating cost assessment of $5,140,875, to be used in conjunction with an appropriation for the same purpose by the town of Freetown.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it?
This is Lakeville's answer to what Freetown voted last week.
It's their piece of the region. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee approves this amount with reservations.
I'm not sure whether reservations are too, but... I'm not sure whether reservations are too, but anyone care to speak to it? No one.
Well, I have--
I'm sorry. Oh, you're going to give us your reservations?
I am certainly going to give you my reservations. The amount of money that we're moving to appropriate here, there is no real discretionary funding in this amount of money. We are funding the minimum amount, the transportation, plus an additional $31,000 and change to match the money from Freetown that they voted. This committee is fine with that. This committee is not fine with the $1.18 million being used from their fund, from the deficit reduction fund. I would like to, there was a gentleman over here who talked about communication between the two committees. I can give you my word, sir, that everyone sitting up on this stage is going to make that one of their top priorities next year on the local and on the regional budget, that we're going to work together much more closely and have a better understanding of the process and get involved earlier on. This committee is not comfortable with that money being used in total. This committee is not comfortable with the fact that we really did not receive the detailed information that we wanted on the types of cuts that would be necessary were that entire amount not used. At the same time, there's nothing that we can do about this. We are voting effectively the minimum amount of money, and we speak with our checkbook, we speak with our money, all of us up here. So we want you to know that we're not comfortable with this, but we also have our hands tied. We are doing the minimum amount that we can do. It also is worth noting that this was not a unanimous recommendation of the Lakeville members to the Regional School Committee as well, that one member supported it, and that was kind of what put us in this position right now. So our recommendation is that you need to vote for this because it's what we have to do, but we don't have to like it, and we don't, and we have to look at changing the process next year. Because using this money now, where are we going to be in fiscal '09? The region's going to be starting from what we can figure, 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars in debt. Okay? So, you know, as we used to say a lot more, it is what it is. We're here, we have to vote for it, we ask you to vote for it, but we don't have to like it, and that's kind of where we are.
Seeing no one at the microphones, I'm going to proceed to a vote. It's a required majority only. All in favor of Article Six, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article Six, please raise your cards. I see no cards, so I declare it passed by unanimous consent. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $81,762 for the payment of vocational education tuitions and related transportation for students enrolled in vocational education programs other than at Old Colony Vocational School.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it? Just say what it's for.
This is necessary to pay for students who wish to enroll in programs that aren't offered at Old Colony.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee approves.
Thank you. Seeing no further people at microphones, we will move to a vote, a simple majority. All in favor of Article Eight, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article Seven, I'm sorry, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I declare Article Seven to have been passed unanimously. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $717,768 to cover the cost of tuition for special education students enrolled in out-of-district placements.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. And this is something to explain?
Yes, this is monies that are necessary to provide programs that aren't offered in district.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Sadly, the Finance Committee has to approve this. My feeling is that this is for 21 students with extreme special needs. We are required by law to pay this. The state will reimburse us a portion of it a year down the road. This amount represents in excess of, for these 21 students, in excess of 12% of the entire elementary school budget. We live in the only state in the Union that requires these services up to the age of 22, so perhaps that's something the next time you run into your state representative or state senator, you might want to chew there a little bit.
Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Are you marching down to the microphone? No. You did it with great purpose. Seeing none, we will move to a vote, which is a simple majority. All in favor of Article Eight, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article Eight, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. I declare it passed by majority vote. Article Nine.
Senator Black from the Board of Assessors, and I move, Mr. Moderator, that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2008 recertification of values as mandated by the Mass. Department of Revenue.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone need an explanation on this?
I'm sorry, you're speaking thirty?
Yes, three zero, comma, zero, zero, zero. Okay. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approves.
Seeing no one at the microphone, we will vote this by simple majority. All in favor of Article Nine, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article Nine, please raise your cards. I see no one opposed. I declare it passed by unanimous consent. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of $456,000 be and hereby is appropriated to pay costs of the following capital improvements and items of capital equipment. Ambulance, $110,000. Fire chief vehicle, $25,000. Deputy chief vehicle, $23,000. Skidder Highway, $25,000. Superintendent of Streets vehicle, $20,000. Two cruisers police, $55,000. Special needs van school, $23,000. Two copiers school, $12,000. Roll-off truck transfer station, $140,000. Three roll containers for the transfer station, $13,000. Backstop Ted Williams Camp Park Department, $10,000. And for the payment of any and all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectman, be and hereby is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the General Laws, or provide further that in the case of borrowings for transfer station equipment described above, the amounts needed to repay such borrowings shall in the first instance be derived from transfer station revenues. Goodness.
Is there a goodness I should add on there?
Sorry, it's a lot of legalese.
Indeed. May I have a second, please? Motion has been made and seconded. Would you like to speak to it, please?
I would. The amount of money that you're looking at here, first, off the bat, the $140,000 for the roll-off truck from the transfer station and the three-roll containers are being paid out of retained earnings for the transfer station. They have no impact on our budget whatsoever, so well done, transfer station, on having that money available. Secondly, the entire capital plan that was approved by the Capital Expenditure Committee totaled $914,000. We panicked when we saw that, and we saw the state of the budget now, and we went back to see what projects could be deferred. Every single one of those $914,000 worth of projects is a legitimate and important need, but we had to prioritize things. The Capital Expenditure Committee agreed with the selectman and Finance Committee's recommendation on this. They know that we are going to be revisiting them, as do the department heads whose items were deferred. They also are aware of that. And to anticipate a question about why we're looking at buying vehicles, the practice in Lakeville has been when a cruiser gets too beat up for the police to use safely, we give it to a town official to do their job. So we have a bunch of decrepit old Crown Vics going around sucking down gas like you wouldn't believe and raising our maintenance. We're looking at buying different types of vehicles, energy-efficient and appropriate for the job. We need them. There's no way around them. We cannot continue to have, I mean, actually, a few years ago, Bob Darling was driving one of these, and I think the whole bottom transmission fell out when he was doing his job. So it's not a frivolous, it's not a frivolous request, and believe me, we've looked at everything in comparison to the whole. These projects are the ones that need to go, so I hope that you will support them.
I take it as member of the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee supports this?
Yes, we do.
Ah. Does anyone wish to speak to it? Seeing none, we're going to have to move to a vote. If it is not a unanimous vote, I'm going to have to take a count because this is a two-thirds vote. So we're going to try for unanimous first. All in favor of this article, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. This is the hard part. Anybody opposed to this article, please raise your card and wave it vigorously. I see no vigorous waving, so I am going to declare that this has been passed unanimously. Article Eleven.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,400 for the purpose of leasing for a term of five years one new administrative vehicle for the use of the Office of the Assessors.
Motion has been made and seconded by, I think, Mr. Garvey. Would you care to speak to it, please?
Your Capital Expenditures Committee during reviewing all of these things uncovered the fact that while the assessors need a new vehicle, they typically only drive a couple of thousand miles a year. When they looked into it, they found that we could spend $23,000 to buy a car, or we could lease a, is it Ford Focus? A Ford Focus, an energy or something along that line, a fuel-efficient car that will do the job it needs to do, and they're saving you a lot of money by doing it this way. And the Finance Committee does approve this.
Thank you. Seeing no one at a microphone, unless she's moving to the mic, no, she's going to the back. No one there to talk about it, so we will simply vote, and we only need a majority vote on this article. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to this, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare Article Eleven passed unanimously. Article Twelve. Nancy?
Oh, Nancy, okay. I move that the town vote to accept under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 90, Section 34, and a portion in the amount of $278,955.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Once again, our Superintendent of Streets will speak to this.
Mr. Beck.
This is the town's annual allotment from the state for roadway improvements, which the town is to vote to accept.
Thank you. We're receiving money. I don't think anyone's going to argue that one. So we'll move to a direct vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I declare Article Twelve passed by unanimous consent. Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone this matter indefinitely.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
We no longer just simply go over articles or withdraw them. We have to kill them, so this is what that's going to do. All in favor of postponing Article Thirteen indefinitely, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no one opposed. Article Thirteen is postponed indefinitely. Article Fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $50,000 to the reserve fund.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it?
We put $50,000 into the reserve fund to cover anticipated emergency expenses during the year. We would like to see that number at $100,000, but we don't have the money, so we'll stay with the 50 that we do have available.
Anyone else wish to speak? I'm assuming the Finance Committee supports this?
Yes, we do.
This requires a majority vote. All in favor of Article Fourteen, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article Fourteen, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare Article Fourteen passed unanimously. Article Fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Garvey. I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of $23,312 for the purpose of financing the following water pollution, abatement facility projects, repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitations all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. That project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements as well as take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Garvey, would you care to speak to it at all?
Yes, this is the money that the Board of Health runs out to property owners to repair their septic systems, and then it's repaid to the town, and then we ask the town people to put it back in so we can run it on again. Pretty simple.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee approves.
I see no one moving to the mics, so we will move on and vote on Article Fifteen. A simple majority. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. I declare Article Fifteen passed unanimously. Article Sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote that the sum of $27,830,000 is hereby appropriated for the purpose of financing the construction of a sewer project for the shorefront communities on the western side of Long Pond, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended by State 1998, Chapter 78, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of selectman is authorized to borrow $27,830,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter 44 of General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended by Statute 1998, Chapter 78, that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of selectman determines that they should be issued, should be issued, as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) as most recently amended by Statute 1998, Chapter 78, in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with a trust and otherwise to contract with a trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. And Martha, you thought yours was--
And I need a second. Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it, please? In English.
Before the Finance Committee?
Well, the standard here is the maker of the motion gets first shot.
Okay. That's good, because none of us are for this. What happened was, to get on, to make out the application for the SRF, the State Revolving Fund loan, we were told it could take up to five years to get on the list, so we filled out this huge, long application and got on the list and got on it the first year, and we're not ready. I mean, there's no way that we're going to borrow $27 million. What we're looking for is some matching money. You have 600 residents on the shorefront community, and they're not going to be able to pay back $27 million, so we're going to spend the next year or two looking for some grants, federal and state grants, and figure that we need to get at least half of it in outright grants before we can even think about it. But in order to stay on the list, we have to bring it to town meeting and vote it down, I hope, so that it doesn't take as much to stay on the-- so that it doesn't take as much to stay on the list. We can stay on the list now much easier than if we didn't bring it to town meeting. They would probably throw us out forever, so at least we brought it to town meeting, and it will make it easier for us to remain on that list, and we won't have to do as much paperwork.
Thank you. And the Finance Committee?
Does not recommend.
Does not recommend.
Don't vote for it.
So... Just in case you missed it, uh, I take it we don't have to go any further comment. This is going to take a two-thirds vote to pass. All in, I'm going to go for it. Anybody, anyone in favor of Article 16, please raise your cards. I see no cards raised. All opposed to Article 16, please raise your cards. I don't know if you'd do this, but I declare it unanimously defeated. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaw by adding the following new section, and if I may, Mr. Moderator, request a waiver of reading the entire article.
Uh, just let me catch up with you, please, and find it.
Um, with one modification.
This is Article 17?
Yes.
Yes. There is one modification where there is a decimal point misplaced. Would you care to indicate where?
On page eight. If people will look at the back of the bylaw. Section 6.3 under penalties. The sentence reads, "A violation of this bylaw or any provision thereof shall be punishable by a civil penalty as defined in section..." The article says 2.4. It's a misprint. It's actually Section 24.
So, strike the decimal, and where the rest is as printed. May I have a second, please? Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Merritt?
Um, the Night Sky bylaw is something that the Planning Board has been implementing for a number of years just over site plan review as it relates to commercial and industrial development. We have recently felt the need that it would be the best thing for us to implement it over the entire town, which would require implementing site, not site plan, but implementing the Night Sky bylaw or the use of exterior lighting for your home. What it does basically is protect your neighbor or protect those people who live around you from lighting up your front yard at nighttime rather than just their own, and that's basically what it does.
Thank you. The Finance Committee have any recommendation on this?
No.
No. Sometimes you do. Anyone have a further question about Article 17? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. And it's a majority vote. All in favor of Article 17, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. I know it's a, this, this is a general bylaw. This is not a zoning. All opposed to this, please raise your cards. I count three, so this passes by a majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 5.0, intensity regulations, by deleting the word "such" from the phrase, "No more than one principal structure shall be built upon any such lot or take any action relative thereto." The section would then provide 5.0 intensity regulations, except as provided otherwise in this bylaw, no structure hereafter erected, altered, or placed in any district shall be located on a lot having less than the minimum requirement set forth by the table below, see 5.1. No more than one principal structure shall be built upon any lot, and no existing lot shall be changed as to size or shape so as to violate the requirements set forth below.
Thank you. Do I have a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it, sir?
The reason the Planning Board submitted the article was to clarify the intent of the existing bylaw. The amendment is not a change. It's a clarification consistent with the longstanding interpretation of the bylaw by both the Building Inspector and the Board of Appeals. The amendment is proposed at this time because of a literal reading of the existing language could result in a different interpretation.
Does, do they have a hearing on this, sir?
Uh, Planning Board did hold a hearing on it, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Markson, I see you at the microphone.
I did attend that hearing. I might say that I had something to do with this article being brought forward due to a project that I'm developing on County Road, and my counsel found that the word "such" created what we didn't believe was an ambiguity, but that's neither here nor there. The effect of this bylaw is an intensity regulation which limits the number of buildings on any site, whether it be residential, commercial, business, or industrial, to one building. The practice of the town by way of the zoning board has been to grant special permits to have more than one building on a business-owned lot. I don't know what they do with commercial, but there have been several locations where they have approved more than one principal building on a lot. We have an intensity bylaw with respect to big box buildings. We don't want the buildings to be too big. Now, we don't want the buildings to be too many. Sometimes, the best development of a site for business use involves more than one building rather than making a building bigger so that it can accommodate the need. We are seeing in our town a need for revenue. We're seeing, and I'm seeing, as someone who's trying to develop his land, a difficulty in doing that. It's taken almost two years to develop this, which has retarded the increase in revenue to the town. I propose, and I certainly, by the way, think it's reasonable that only one principal building be on a residential lot, and that's consistent with the in-law apartment bylaw that we passed at the previous town meeting. Therefore, I move that the article be amended so that it reads, after such lot, it reads, "In a residential district", which would limit the effect of the limitation to residential districts and would allow more than one building in a business or an industrial lot. And there are, I would add, already intensity restrictions based on setbacks and other reasons. We've seen several projects in town that have...
Before you speak to it?
I have the article. I have the amendment.
I need just the amendment, and then I need a second to it, and then I'll allow you to speak to it, but you're kind of putting both of them together. So, I'll put the second part on hold. Is there a second to Mr. Markson's amendment?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to amend this motion. Could you just wait one second, please, while we digest your amendment? I take it you put a cross through the word "such"?
Yeah, I put a cross through the word "such" to conform to the article before the proposed amendment, and then I added language which is underlined in my proposed amendment. It's only the middle section that I showed you. I folded it over.
Okay.
That, right. Yes.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Speak to it.
Uh, what we have now is we have a procedure whereby more than one building can be put on a lot with approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is overworked. I was there recently, and I felt terrible when the discussion on my project caused such a delay that a friend of mine, whose counsel, who's an attorney, and his client were required to come back on another occasion, incurring expense to his client and inconvenience to the attorney. I think that, you know, it's something that the board is doing. They haven't indicated that they have any standards to guide them. It's redundant because this is something that is already discussed before the Planning Board, which will approve or not approve a site plan or have imposed requirements in order for a site plan to issue, and I think that it is in the interest of the town to have a more efficient use of its business zoning, business-owned land so that it can increase our tax base.
Thank you, Mr. Markson. Mr. Merritt?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board doesn't necessarily disagree with the intent of the amendment. However, the Planning Board accepts responsibility for all zoning bylaws, and it takes that responsibility very seriously. There's a process for bringing a zoning bylaw to town meeting. The process first is the need. This is established through regional economic changes in the town in an effort to stay ahead or on par of regional and town trends, and all zoning changes are derived from the master plan. Sometimes, in this situation, it may be for clarification of an existing language. The Master Plan Implementation Committee currently researches, discusses, reviews, and suggests all bylaws for town meeting to the Planning Board. The Planning Board then reviews and discusses the article and wording at a public meeting. The Planning Board with help of the zoning enforcement officer finalizes the language and intent of the article. The bylaws then sent to town council for review. This review is for legal correction of language and for an understanding of how the article will implicate the balance of the zoning bylaws. A public hearing is then held. The article is advertised for two consecutive weeks in that newspaper which is most widely distributed throughout town. Such hearing is also posted by the town clerk 14 days prior to the public hearing. After this hearing, the public and public debate, the Planning Board makes a decision to recommend or not recommend the bylaw for town meeting floor. If it recommends to approve, the article is then placed on the warrant, and the review process begins again with public notification in the newspaper and at subsequent select board meetings. Here we are. The bylaw we have recommended has gone through the entire process. In my opinion, any amendment or modification of a zoning bylaw without the proper procedure and public comment before town meeting would not be wise, and I don't believe is in the best interest of the town. That's not to say that in the future, we won't follow the procedure, take the modification, and bring it back at a subsequent town meeting. The Planning Board at this time does not suggest recommendation to the town of the amendment.
Do you wish to speak?
I have a question.
To whom?
If we had a business that, for example, might require storage of flammable's or oxidizing agents, for example, they may not, from a loss prevention point of view, want to have it in their main building, and I don't know how the fire code and the planning board review would play into this under both amendment proposals. I mean, obviously, there's quantities, incompatibilities, how they're stored, et cetera, and I'm not trying to confuse it. I'm just trying to, because I can think of a case where perhaps you would want them in a separate building in that location.
I'm going to ask Mr. Markson that he reply to that?
Certainly.
Just very quickly. Usually, that's considered an outbuilding, not a primary building on the property. It's usually small and associated with the...
Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes. Uh, in response to Mr. Merritt, I did attend the meeting that was posted, and I did, I actually ran home and typed this modification up and brought it to the board, so it's no surprise to them. They had exactly what you see there on the piece of paper. There was nobody else at the meeting to discuss this. I did discuss it with my counsel at my expense, who had been dealing with this issue and who thinks it's a good bylaw. I mean, it's a good amendment to the bylaw, and it represents sound policy, and I think that it merits the town's support.
Thank you, Mr. Markson. I see no one else at the microphones. So, we are going to vote on the amendment only, which only needs a majority vote. If the majority vote passes it, then it becomes part of the entire article, which has to pass by two-thirds, but right now, we're only voting on the amendment of Mr. Markson's. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. The amendment fails. This reverts back to the original Article 18. Does anyone wish to comment on Article 18 as it stands without the amendment? Mr. Markson?
I think that this article ought to be defeated because I don't think it represents sound policy.
Sound policy, is that what you said?
That's what I said.
Thank you.
I didn't make enough sound.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we move to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote, and I am going to ask the counters to count, because I already know it's not going to be unanimous. All in favor of Article 18, please raise your cards. Counters, please count. Thank you.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, thank you. Fifty-one, thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to Article 18, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Five.
Thank you.
Eight.
Thank you. I have 100 to 13. I have a vote of 100 in favor, 13 opposed. Therefore, it passes by the necessary two-thirds. I declare Article 18 approved. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding the following under Section 2.0 definitions. Drive-through facility, commercial establishment which provides a service directly to the occupants of a motor vehicle or where the customer drives a motor vehicle into the premises to a window or mechanical device through or by which the customer is serviced without existing exiting the vehicle. Fast food restaurant, any restaurant serving the majority of its food, indisposable containers, packages, or other similar wrappings for consumption on or off the premises.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Merritt?
Well, the purpose for the article, Mr. Moderator, is because the Planning Board's beginning to feel that with the increased commercial development along Route 105, we feel the typical war that may go on between battling fast food restaurants may happen and may migrate down Route 105. This is something we would not like to see. We're trying to decrease or keep decrease the amount of trash, I guess, off of our streets, and we're trying to regulate better development coming down the 105 corridor or anywhere through town.
Thank you. Did you have a hearing?
Yes, the Planning Board held a hearing. It was an article that was actually given to us by the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and we voted unanimously to approve.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This is a bylaw, so therefore it takes a two-thirds vote. Tellers are going to have to count because the Attorney General gets mad if we don't. Are we ready? All in favor of Article 19, please raise your cards. Tellers, please count. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to Article 19, please raise your cards. Hundred twenty-eight.
Zero.
Zero.
Thank you. Well, we did it. 128 to zero. Article 19 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, Article 20.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to amend Section 4.1.2 of the zoning bylaw, Table of Use Regulations, Business Use by adding the following. Drive-through facility and fast food facility being located only in the business district by special permit. And fast food rest, or a fast food restaurant only being allowed in areas served by municipal water.
May I have a second? Would you, why don't we do it, we'd do it the other way? Did you have a planning meeting?
We had a planning board meeting, and we voted unanimously to approve.
Thank you. Would you speak to it?
It's a brief explanation. It's a continuation of the other article which we just voted on, which I thank you for. All it does is place in further descriptive, in a further descriptive manner, drive-through facility and fast food restaurant in those appropriate locations within the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, let's go for it. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. Put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. I see no opposition, therefore this zoning bylaw passes unanimously. Article 21.
Article 21, I move that the town vote to amend Section 7.4.6 of the zoning bylaw, Specific Uses by Special Permits by adding the following. Drive-through facility and fast food restaurant, and if I may, Mr. Moderator, request waiving the reading, the rest of it. It is exactly as it's written in your bulletin.
Thank you. Does anyone object? No one objects. Would you care to speak to it, sir? Oh, may I have a second?
Second.
All on the same night, the Planning Board held a hearing concerning this same article and approved it unanimously.
And, and this simply follows up on the other two?
Correct. What it does actually is place into that section in the bylaw which governs the special permit granting authority to follow the procedures. The Planning Board has also adopted rules and regulations which go into much greater detail governing control over the development of fast food or drive-through facilities.
Thank you. Seeing no one else at the microphone, and this takes a two-thirds vote, we will go for it one more time. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. If there are anyone opposed to Article 21, please raise your card and raise it vigorously. I see nothing. Therefore, Article 21 passes by unanimous vote. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the official zoning map by including all of the land being shown as lots 1 through 7 inclusive, as well as the public way shown as Lori Lane into the business district. Such land is shown on a plan entitled, Proposed Layout of Land of Stanley W. Kozlowski, dated August 30th, 1961, and is recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 12 at page 611, and is further described as follows.
You don't have to go there.
Thank you.[1542.43][1542.43](laughter)
If, everyone will look on the next page where there's a locust map, you will see here the bottom of the map, a thing that says Article 22 with an arrow indicating where Lori Lane is. It's essentially opposite the old Lakeville Hospital. Has this been seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. Thank you. Would you care to tell me if the board had a hearing?
The Planning Board did hold a hearing on it, and there was no opposition at the hearing, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to approve it.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee wish to speak to it?
Finance Committee approves.
Thank you. Do you wish to go into further detail?
Is a brief description of the, the property is, is basically a covenanted or restricted subdivision which was done a number of years ago, back when the entire town was pretty much residential. As residential, or as residential property has been converted into commercial, they have been unable to follow through with the same zoning change. They have agreed unanimously, as a butters, to take the entire parcel which they were required to do by their covenant and include it into the commercial zone. By a way of reference, if you look on that same map, you'll notice that the property which is to the south of them is entirely commercial, and the properties going to the north of them are commercial to a depth of 650 feet or greater. So this is very consistent with the development that's going on in that part of town, and we urge you to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Garvey, do you wish to speak?
No, I think Jim answered my question. I just, I would just want to make sure that all the residents were in favor of this.
Oh, yeah. They are. Anyone else? This is going to require a two-thirds vote. Zoning, and it has to be unanimous or we count. So, let's try. All in favor of Article 22, raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. Anyone opposed to Article 22, please raise your card. Someone has raised their card. We have to count. Ready again? This time, counters, please count. All in favor of Article 22, raise your cards.
Twenty-eight.
Thirty-three?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you put your cards down now? Thank you. Now, all opposed to Article 22, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Zero?
One.
One?
Four.
Four. The count is 123 to 5. I declare it passed by two-thirds vote. I will now entertain a motion to dissolve. Motion's been made to dissolve. It is seconded. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. Opposed, raise your cards. The town meeting is dissolved. Thank you for everything.
We live in a great town. We live in a great town. Middle Borough's going into their third night of town meeting. But we've been watching this year after year. They just don't deal with them, and they get worse and worse.